The audience participants and general public should be aware that any or all portions of this open meeting may be recorded by audio or video resources. All of some of this meeting may be rebroadcast periodically by WRPS or other outlets. A person wanting a DVD copy of this meeting should contact WRPS or the Port of Selectmen's Office, a small fee will be charged. All right, we have a continuation, the site and design review for Two Bud's at 53 Airport Park Drive.
Mr. Cameron?
Okay, sure.
That was Jared, Mike.
How you doing, Jared?
Good, how are you?
Can't complain, I guess.
All right, before, before you go into that, if I could, I have a statement that council has advised me to make.
Okay.
It was brought to my attention that the attorneys for the applicant raised a concern about a misunderstood statement that I had made in a previous meeting with which they were in attendance. My understanding that they were left with the impression that would be in opposition to this project, that's not what I said, and that I prefer the same from the truth. I've been nothing but a staunch advocate for marijuana in Rockland. I certainly believe in carrying on or making sure these projects get through. I wanted to clear up that misconception so that I may discharge my position on the planning board effectively and impartially.
All right, thank you for that. All right, who is, who wants to start for Two Bud's?
Good evening, this is Jill Sparks, I'm the Development Manager of Two Bud's. I'll give you a basic overview. Just wanted to read through basically our presentation to resume presenting our project for the site plan review of the proposed renovations at 53 Air Station Industrial Park, AKA 53 Airport Park Drive, Rockland, Massachusetts. Assessors map eight lot five. Per your section 415-58, Article 8 of the site plan review, the site is located in the zoning district H1, which is an overlay marijuana establishment district. Want you to note that the Rockland ZVA has approved with conditions, the special permit application per section 41538.5 for the proposed use of the marijuana establishment in this H1 district. It was filed with the Town Clerk's Office, May 13th, 2018, case number 2019-23. It's our intention to demonstrate how Two Bud's renovation of the 53 Air Station Industrial Park and the development of the new industry, hiring these 22 employees, will complement, sorry, will be compliant with Rockland zoning by law, chapter 415, Article 8, the site then review, and bring substantial benefits to the town of Rockland. Revised the proposed project, which was first submitted to you in December 2019, traffic and parking safety concerns that were raised by the planning, the zoning board, as well as Rockland's traffic and parking engineers, the boards and all the engineers for their input and for the ZVA's approval. The renovation consists of a 36,000 square foot refit of a building, minor exterior improvements, and an interior basic gut renovation. The existing project is all state glass, which is a home auto commercial glass fabrication and installers into our vertically integrated marijuana establishment, which includes both cultivation, production, and the retail store. Our improvements will be basically consisted of following, minor regrading for improved site drainage and pedestrian access. Utility work is needed to suit the new site uses, site lighting with appropriate cutoffs to shield the neighboring properties, I believe you have cut sheets from those lighting specifications. We'll have camera, security surveillance. We're going to reduce the hardscape areas and provide new paved walkways and ramps, providing new landscaping where some of that paved area was, providing a wooden fence along the east property line, which will be to ameliorate concerns that our neighbor had, reconfiguring the parking and restripe indicating parking and loading areas specifically. McKenzie Engineering prepared a hydraulic analysis, which was dated December 2nd, 2019. This analysis summarized that the stormwater runoff pre-post-development plans, which are WS-1 and WS-2, they indicate that the overall impact of the development will improve the stormwater runoff by reducing the amount of impervious or paved areas and increasing the landscaped areas. The landscaped areas will increase with the new development by reclaiming previously paved surfaces with sod and very small plantings. McKenzie Engineering civil plans indicate that the off-street onsite parking of 40 spaces will be provided, which exceeds the requirements for section 14-35. Two Bud's is required to provide a total of 19 parking spaces, which we tallied based on eight spaces for our retail and 11 spaces for our 22 employees at the peak first shift. The 18 parking spaces that we're providing along the south side of the building will have a new four-foot paved pedestrian walkway at the head of those parking spaces, which provide direct access to the retail entry at the southeast corner. Additionally, there's 22 spaces towards the west that will have more direct access to the employee entry at the northwest corner. Please note that all the required parking spaces are provided, being provided at the 53 Air Station Industrial Park. No adjacent businesses or vacant lots are being used to meet this bylaw requirement. Further enhance the safety of vehicular traffic on industrial way, which is a private way, we will strike and provide signage for the loading area, the southern boundary of the property that abuts the private way. We're installing the wooden fence along the east property line while maintaining the paved area adjacent to the building for the fire department access. Ron Mueller Associates prepared a traffic assessment. The assessment summarizes that based on trip generation and distribution estimates, there will be minor increases in traffic on Wayman Street, both northwest and southeast of the site. These increases are minimal and not expected to have an operational impact on the area, streets or nearby intersections. Traffic peer reviewer Jack Gillen was concurred with these findings in his traffic peer review letter. Should further be noted that these increases are well below the transportation impact assessment guidelines developed by the Massachusetts DOT, and therefore analysis of study area intersections is not required. Michael Terese with Platinum Protection Systems LLC out of Salem, New Hampshire is providing the security systems design, installation, and ongoing maintenance. Equipment layout plans E-SEC 1 to 4 included in our submission, first and second presentation. The security plan will include interior/exterior cameras, monitored intrusion alarm system, access controls throughout our facility. Part of this plan, Two Bud's, will have a senior security manager as well as a parking attendant wearing appropriate identification. The comprehensive security plan has been reviewed and approved via letter dated January 8th, 2020 by the tenant Nicholas Deoli, Office Chief of Police, Rockland Police Department. Please note that Two Bud's and the Rockland Police Department have maintained open and direct communication about the impacts of the marijuana establishment retail store on the town since the HCA host community agreement was executed in fall 2018. Also, please note that the police department is involved with the scheduling of the re- and as needed, will provide for local traffic detail around Air Station Industrial Way for our opening period. Also want you to know that deliveries to the site and rental will be scheduled during non-peak hours, loading and unloading. Of commercial vehicles, including cannabis and cannabis products, as well as general facility supplies, will occur in our interior Sallyport and the loading zone, which is located on the south side of the building. All waste will be disposed via our waste compactor, will be removed regularly from the compactor, which is located just adjacent to the Sallyport on the south side of the building, in a carting zone. There's no THC, CBD, or otherwise in the waste materials being removed from the business. Want you to know our retail store tends to operate when it does open, except for Thanksgiving and Christmas, seven days a week, from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM on a walk-in basis. Two Bud's cultivation and manufacturing areas in the facility will operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Employees will work on staggered shifts. Please note that in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, we're prepared to accommodate and be compliant with safe work protocols to protect the health of our employees, vendors, and customers. These provisions will be provided for the duration that's deemed necessary by the governing authorities and will include minimally at the following items. Our facility design has been, provides for the overall health and safe distancing between staff members wherever possible within these elements. We have paired doorways and extra wide corridor doors. We have multiple paths of travel, which could accommodate single flow of traffic. There's hand washing stations and sanitizer stations with paper towel dispensers at every exit and entry point within the facility. Fresh air supply and filter changes will be increased to maximize the fresh air intake and cleanliness of the air. Individual workstations per discipline are divided up throughout the facility and allow for certainly more than six feet distancing between them. The retail store design is being modified from what we had, which was a little more compressed. Will have ample room for customers to maintain the social distancing of six feet. Identification and check-in at the front door will maintain appropriate occupancy within the building to maintain these distances. The checkout stations or POSs are placed at least six feet apart and will be constructed with the plexiglass protection between the budtender and the customer. Once fully approved by the CCC, we hope to implement online ordering and delivery. Our staffing protocols will be implemented that promote the health and safety of everyone at the facility. Each staff will begin their shift with a health check and a questionnaire prior to studenting up and entering the workplace. There'll be in-person, in-person meetings will be limited to five or less individuals. We use technology to accommodate larger than five team member meetings. Daily cleaning will be implemented at the close of retail and at facility shift changes. I want you to know the ZVA approval was granted without the requirement of appointment only transactions. This ZVA will review after three months of our retail operation, one year special permit review. Also, as a reminder, Two Bud's has a signed host community agreement that will generate 3% of our fees up to $500,000 a year for community impact. That $500,000 is in addition to the 3% local sales tax that's passed on all cannabis retail sales, which may add an additional $300,000 to $500,000 annually, bringing the potential contribution to a million, to a million dollars per five years. The Rockland town voted in favor of recreational marijuana zone overlay district a few years ago. This vote indicates that the residents in the town want the convenience of retail shopping. Two Bud's is in the best Rockland location to accommodate the changes anticipated by homeowners, along with the redevelopment of Union Point. A brighter light will shine for improvements and will inevitably come to this part of Rockland. I thank you all for allowing us to present today, and I'm free to answer questions or on our calendar to support any questions that you do have at this time.
Mr. Corbett, Attorney Bob Galvin, I don't know if Mr. McKenzie has the ability to share his screen, but if anybody has a question, there's always that possibility if you don't have the site plans.
Yeah, Bob, I do.
Thanks, Brad.
Host-disabled participant screen sharing, I think you need to enable the screen sharing for us hosting.
Mike Corbett, are you able to allow that? Or WRPS?
Who's the host?
Attorney Galvin, I'm checking into that now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I said, I'm the one that all this stuff.
I did have one question maybe while we're waiting. So are all the abutters in agreement and approved the plan?
Yes, this is Grover Daniels, yes, they have.
Okay.
Along that idea, Mike, I know at one point we had a, one of the, abutters was very concerned about water flow, has that been, wastewater, has that been discussed with them by you people?
Yes, it has. Not only the water, but also the fence was a significant import to them as well. We resolved that by changing the fence from being halfway down on a traditional fence to being a wooden split rail fence that goes the entire east side of the building that abuts them, so those were resolved.
But the drainage issues were taken care of?
The drainage issues and the pictures that all those were brought up will be taken care of with Brad and Mark when they do their site work, yes.
Thank you.
I noticed on the, the front on the industrial way, you've got a 10-foot setback. According to the bylaws, that's supposed to be landscaped? I don't notice anything on this Plan C1 that shows it being landscaped, just sort of 10-foot setback, but not being landscaped.
That's an existing condition, and it's paved all the way from the private way up to the, to the edge of the concrete and asphalt accessways to all state glass currently. We're removing the concrete ways and putting landscape up towards the building to provide for safer pedestrian access, but we are not intending to provide for a 10-foot landscape, a landscaped area along that buffer. Brad, if you'd like to add anything, please do.
I think, yeah, we had a few iterations of design revisions in working with Pat, and I think it's important to note that that row of spaces was actually moved back 20 feet maybe from its existing condition. So there is actually room now to accommodate, I think, a full 25-foot aisle within the paved area onsite, whereas the previous condition, cars would be backing in and out of spaces, probably backing right out onto the, onto the way over the property.
So that you're not planning on putting anything there, the landscaping or a barrier or something, so that they won't back out onto the street?
Well, they shouldn't have to back out onto the street, because there's, there's ample room with a 25-foot aisle onsite now, whereas there wasn't before, and I think the plan is to stripe. If you look at C1, there's a stripe, delineate the property line, which is actually within the pavement.
Well, it's showing a 10-foot setback, but no barrier or anything is going to be put there?
No barrier in the front, no.
And if I'm not mistaken, that was something where we originally met back at one of the hearings, we were, that was a recommendation in regards to what was currently existing, but the concern was having cars backing out onto Airport Drive, the way it is right now. So there's something that, that one of your members was concerned with, so therefore we created that aisle way and created the, we pushed it up forward in, in regards to the concern for the public safety in the way it is currently.
Well, there's no driveway coming in off of Airport Park Drive. Just get men off and drive right up to the spots.
Right up to the spot, the way it was, but it was very close to Airport Park Drive, the way-
I know it was right on the street line.
Yeah.
And I've been up there and looked at it, I, I'm not comfortable with that, though.
I, I would like you to note that it, that is an existing condition. We feel that we've, we've absolutely improved the condition, it's, it's a private way, and we are at the very end of a cul-de-sac.
I know the area very well.
Okay, thank you.
Are you gonna have like somebody directing traffic, I thought I saw somewhere?
Yes, we will have a parking attendant and, and traffic direction there. Because of the Sallyport, which is located at the center of the building, and there's, there's concrete retaining walls either side, you know, we, we can't push the parking any further up to provide for an interior drive lane sufficient for, to create that landscape buffer that you're seeking. It's impossible for us to, to do that.
How will the parking attendant stop people from just like driving in? What's, what's his use, what's his purpose basically then?
So, this is Grover.
Okay.
Brad, were you gonna answer that?
No.
No, okay. So the purpose of the intended, which is a, was a condition from the ZVA, was to assist people into where they could park and how they would leave as well. So there was a long discussion at the ZVA meeting regarding how best to do that, and it was decided at that level that the stripe, a painted stripe down the border of our property would be sufficient in terms of identifying where they should drive into. We could certainly put a post, if it, if it worked, on the corner maybe, would that work? No?
After lots of review of this, we, we think any additional obstructions or, or divisions would, would actually inhibit traffic flow and safe movement.
The, John, you're thinking about doing something landscape between where the customers park and industrial way?
What's the, yes, what's the distance between the end of that 20-foot line coming out from your, the front end of the parking lot to the property line?
I believe it's 25 feet.
I'm sorry?
I believe it's 25 feet.
So that you could put a driveway in, entrance in somewhere off of industrial park and put some kind of a, if you don't want to take up the asphalt, at least something, a fence or something. I know our requirements are 23 feet from the back of the parking lot to the, that they need 23 feet to back out and turn. I'm just not comfortable with people coming in off of the street wherever they want, and to Mike's question about the parking attendant, if he's all the way, and the plan I'm looking at, if he's all the way down to the right and someone comes in all the way up at the left at the other end of those 20 parking spaces or whatever's there, he's not gonna have any control of it.
You have, can I share my screen?
Yes, you should be able to share your screen now.
Can everyone see this plan?
Yes.
You have actually these handicap spaces that are much closer to the property line here that will need to, to an extent, back out into the Airport Park Drive, the way they do currently, and the reason for that is that needed to, there's no handicap accessible entrance there currently, we needed to create this ramp system right here.
Yep.
We needed length in order to do that, to, to achieve the grades, the minimums, maximum grades that are required under the AAB. So, I guess, it's up to, it's up to the team, I, I guess an option would be, maybe somewhere at this point, because you do have 25 feet from the edge of the space to the property line, somewhere in here, put some sort of a demarcation along the property line. There's still room to, to access the spaces, back in and out of the spaces, or pull it in out of the spaces, and maybe somewhere in here, just to provide some sort of a border, John, that you're looking for, and maybe the flow could be, and over here you have a loading area again, that is in the location of the existing spaces, so you couldn't really put, you couldn't restrict the flow of traffic in here. And you can see underneath the, the darker lines represent the proposed space locations, and underneath kind of at a grade scale is the existing, the existing spaces, so you can see how far, how much further back they were moved from the right away. So again, it's a question, you, you could probably put something in here to demarcate, whether it be a split rail fence or something, I don't know, it's, it's a question for the team. I don't know what you feel comfortable with.
I just think there should be something there, be it a split rail fence, I'm not looking to increase your cost by a tremendous amount by any means, I'm just thinking more of safety of people, excuse me, backing out onto industrial way, maybe not even realizing Well, I don't know how much pedestrian traffic there may be walking up and down that street, I know it's not a retail area and that type of thing, but still, I have a little concern about it.
And I know you know the area quite well, it's the last business-
John, and team, maybe, you know, you know, I hear the concern in, in your bylaw, what about a temporary barricade possibly, but in the event of a snowstorm and stuff like that, that's something that could be easily removed, then have snow removable, and not have plowing, you know, snow jammed up against a thick structure, which is gonna keep coming out of the parking lot or to the roadway, would that maybe be something that we could-
I, I can see that consideration, and I would not have a problem with something of that nature, yes. If you've got snow coming, that you remove it.
I would say it's just for function for safety-wise, for people backing in and out and not creating a tighter space than necessary, so given the event of a certain time frame of the year, maybe we could, we could, you know, add just up temporarily and then be easily moved if need be, if there's an issue.
I, I would agree with John on that, I think that a temporary situation or temporary, not maybe fencing, but maybe temporary pylons that could be there to keep people from backing out onto it, but then removed easily enough to, for snow removal and whatnot.
I guess I, I kind of disagree with, with it being necessary, if I may. Airport Park Drive isn't very busy, can I ask the applicant, at your peak, how many individuals do you think you'll have inside the building? Can I ask the applicant, at your peak, how many individuals do you think you'll have inside the building?
Grover? Or Jill? So, this is Grover. So I think at our peak period, now with the six-foot distancing and retail with COVID, I think the most we're gonna see in our retail space is gonna be 12 customers, maybe 14 is my guess, in terms of the most. So I think that'll be about it, to be honest.
And they don't tend to spend a lot of time when they're in there, right?
No, they're gonna come in and come out, and most of them are gonna order ahead now with what's going on. I like the idea, if it's something that we could do, if it's acceptable, to buy white pylons that would be two to three feet tall, that are really good to look at, that we could put down that as a barrier and they'd be removable, and we would put them down immediately. And then they would stay down unless there was snow. And that way, in case someone does back out and hit it, it's just gonna be rubber and it won't even hurt their car, but it'll be the delineation in addition to the stripe that we came up with at the ZBA meeting. And that would, we would provide that, to John's point, we would do that so that they would, the customer would see that they have to come closer to the building as they approach our building and that they're not coming out and swinging around, to John's point. So think if we did pylons, white pylons with a black stripe that, you know, that were appropriate for the area, I think that would be a solution that would be hopefully okay for Rockland and it would certainly be fine with Tubus.
Something that would take care of my concerns, I think. I don't have a problem with that.
I have a question, yeah. This is more towards Pat Brennan. Pat, do you have any suggestions on what we could use instead of pylons? Because part of the thing is, they'll be there for a little while, but then after a while, they just won't.
Yeah.
You know, come springtime, they'll forget to put them out, you know?
Yes, this Pat Brennan with the engineering. One thing that could be considered would maybe be a, basically a wood guardrail, double-faced, so that there's, you know, the wood is on both sides of it. So then it's a guardrail from both the vehicles in the travelway as well as the vehicles backing out of the spaces.
Just a concern, you know, I mean, when you move the pylons for the winter plowing and everything, they never get re-put back out there.
Well, this is, that's not how, that's not how I operate. If I need to do something, it'll be done. And the parking lot attendant, the first thing they'll do in the morning, and they'll watch it all day, is to make sure those pylons are working. I don't mind the idea, except I'm concerned that it would actually take, what would be the width that you're thinking of for that wooden guardrail?
It would only be probably, so your wood timbers could be three inches wide as an eight-inch post. So you'd be looking at, you know, 14 inches or so total width, because you'd have the post in the middle and wood faced on both sides.
Yeah.
Can we go right up to the property line, Brad? And is that allowable for us? Can we put that right on the property line? Does that have to be a setback? No, you can. I believe you can put it on the property line.
You couldn't. It's a private way.
It's like a fence too, so a fence is permissible to go right up to the line.
It's just that, I guess, my original suggestion was a, like a split rail fence. And I guess my question would be, and then there was a concern, I think Mark brought up the concern, Mr. Rochette, about it impeding the removal of snow, right? Was that your concern, Mark?
Yeah, correct. It'll just make it difficult for snow plowing, clearing, and maintaining a nice, free, clear, no slippery path.
So it's, there is a cost consideration here. I guess a double, double-faced wood guardrail would cost substantially more than a split rail fence. If the split rail fence is meets John and the board's concern about, you know, demarcating that property line and keeping cars, keeping cars on site. I mean, if you're gonna put a permanent fixture in, it would make more sense, I think, I understand what Pat's saying, that guardrail's not going anywhere, but very, very costly. It might be a little more upfront cost to put in fenced posts and everything that Pat is recommending, but if you just put up a split rail fence, if somebody hits it, the thing's history. Well, it's, it's no, I guess it's, you're not gonna be back, people shouldn't be backing into it. There's 25-foot, 25-feet of space to pull in and out of there. You could, your requirement for two-way traffic is 23 feet or 24 feet with spaces on both sides. So I don't, I don't really see an issue with that, but.
Well, is the purpose, is the purpose what you're looking for, John and Mike? Is the purpose to delineate or is the purpose to block?
I think part of the purpose is safety, for one. I had not thought of what Pat was talking about, but the more I think about that and to go along with what Mike Corbett just said, maybe that fence would serve both sides of it just as well. As far as snow removal, you're gonna have to have a front-end loader in there to remove your snow anyways.
Yeah, I mean, you're correct, but I didn't know if he wanted to delineate or to block.
Well, if it's gonna be safety, it's gonna have to block it.
Yeah, what, what's this, this, it's, I could understand the guardrail along the property line. If this was a through road and there were traffic, consistent traffic in both directions. But this is, this is the last site on the right. There's no, you know, if cars are driving down that road, they're driving to the end of the parking lot at 10 miles an hour, 15 miles an hour. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure what a guardrail's gonna accomplish.
I don't see much, that's why I was asking if it's for delineation purposes or for blocking, because safety-wise, it's an existing condition and they do, I correct you if I'm wrong, but they do a retail operation out of there by selling glass. And they do have, they do have a storefront already.
Put up some ballons.
I mean, you can say that it's a dead end right now, but we don't know what the future may hold. That may, once they start redevelopment of the base, that may open up into, you know, a throughway or a through road. So to say that, I mean, I agree, there's not a lot of traffic there. I absolutely agree with that. But to say that it's a dead end and it will remain a dead end, we really don't know. It may not remain a dead end.
That was gonna be my next question, what's to the left of that or further down that road? I know right now it goes nowhere, but it's land that can and might very well be developed when the airbase gets going again.
Well, there's wetlands in here within the right of way. And then the natural heritage and endangered species line is right, this is all within the NH, you know, priority habitat. So the development potential would be limited here. This line actually extends almost along the back border of the site and along the upper baby site in here, back in here. But this, this, back here, it's not to say the road could never be extended. I don't think it's likely.
To be honest, in all previous iterations of any redevelopment of the airbase, I've personally never seen any connection to airport, a park drive in any iteration that's come about there the last 30 years.
With the main entrance being a few hundred yards down the road, I don't know why that would be proposed.
I mean, I guess, you know, just to be dissenting here with the rest of the board, I guess. You know, we have folks backing out onto Union Street all day, every day. Charlie could obviously attend this better than anybody else. I'm not sure of how many accidents we have on Union Street. And there's, they have far more, I'm sorry, poor businesses, far more traffic. I think to require a permanent fixture will create more issues than it's worth. And I think we're approaching this as being a high-traffic business on a high-traffic road when really, certainly there will be some retail, but it's not, we're not putting Walmart here. It's not gonna be something that's high-traffic. So I, I understand the concern, but I also think we need to pretty much look at the plan as it is and consider the roadway that it's on and the type of business. And I'm not sure any barrier, me personally, is necessary. But I am amenable to going along with the temporary, the white, I forget the word already, cone thing that was mentioned earlier, if that's something that, you know, we want to compromise. But I think anything beyond that is personally overkill.
All right, just while we're on the road, that road is in pretty tough condition. I'm not sure who maintains that road, if it's, if it's, if it's all the businesses on that.
Like no one, Charlie, in all honesty.
What's that?
Who maintains it? I said, I think no one, in all honesty.
Yeah, that road is in pretty tough shape. So I mean, if I were putting a business there, you can have the shining diamond right there, but is there any plan to figure out or repair that road?
Yeah, when we're in business selling out of there.
And it's up to all of the property owners to come to an agreement and contribute for that repair.
Okay, I agree with that. So has there been any discussion with the other property owners to kind of put those wheels in motion?
Yes, we have, but we haven't conceded to a final decision.
Okay.
Yeah, they, right now, all state patches every spring. And it obviously needs to be upgraded from those patchings. We just gotta get in and get some cash flow and then improve the road. I think that's, that's where we'll go. Yeah.
I think the fence should be on the permanent side, the rail, whatever you want to consider, because you're gonna be creating a lot more traffic down there than you see now, on a daily basis. So it's more of a safety thing also, because once, once you do fix the road, people aren't gonna go be going down there five miles an hour.
Grover, Jill, what do, I don't see it being an issue for cost when we build this, if you want a fence. I just want to know if the board really wants to push, you want to move forward with it? Grover and Jill, are you guys against putting up a permanent fence?
I think we could do a split rail fence that delineated along the 18. I can just scroll a little on, so for us to be able to have access and vehicular entry into these 18 spaces. And, you know, we can't, we can't put a fence at the foot of the accessible spaces because it's too tight there. So it would have to start further back and allow for vehicular area, exactly. There's something about actual air, and then it has to allow for the vehicles to loading area. So it would be maybe, is that about 75, 80 feet perhaps?
Yeah, I, if that's what, I think that makes, if the board wants that, and that's a sticking point, I don't think that's gonna be an issue at all, and I agree with you, Jill, and everybody else, that getting the cars in and out, especially from the accessible spots and the loading dock area safely. If that's a sticking point for the board, I'm fine with that, Grover.
I would like to see that we use the split rail fence. I understand that the double-sided guardrail might, you know, be more of a, you know, a substantial, but I don't think anyone's gonna be driving through this. I think it's about delineation. I think that we have a split rail fence set up on the east property. We are a farm and we're sort of, as far as our image, and even though it's the end of an industrial way, that is what we're looking at, also a split rail fence. We're damaged, could be readily fixed, and the damage that has done to someone's bumper, you know, might be not as severe as a whole guardrail, if that would be acceptable to the board.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm trying to figure this here, on everybody backing out, which is a good point. I feel something does have to be there. Where is, show me where on, the Bradley's got this chart up. Like you're entering these spaces from, for me, is it wide open all the way down? Are you gonna be driving straight up? Or are you gonna have a certain point where they come in and a certain point where they have to go out? Can you show me that on there for a minute?
Well, it's wide open now, I think, as you know, as it is currently. From here, all the way down to the, all the way down to the end of the, I guess, the existing curb cut here. The road terminates right here.
Okay.
So what we're thinking, as Jill said, is you need, need to leave 25, this is a handicap space here, so you need to leave, make sure you have at least a 25-foot opening here to facilitate two-way traffic. So we're thinking of starting the fence here and bringing it down probably 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, maybe 11 or so spaces. What's that about 80 or 90 feet to about here? So that you still have 24-foot clearance between the edge of the loading area and say this point in here, right in here.
Okay. I've been down there in a while. Is it curbing all the way down that? Is there granite curbing or any curb, curb in that, or is it wide open?
Oh, there's no curbing. It's a sea of asphalt on both sides. The same situation exists on the opposite side of the road here. Right in here.
So, this is Grover. I think it's, uh, it's been interesting for us, because we've gone from not doing anything to the parking to putting a sidewalk in, moving the parking closer, accommodating the number of spaces. I think it logically improves the project to put the split rail in. Brad, if it's 11 or 12 spaces, whatever it is, to need to keep the clearance by the loading area. And I think aesthetically, it's consistent with what's happening on the other side. And if it does get hit, we have to repair it. And we're gonna have to probably snow blow the snow on the inside of the fence and continue to do the front-end loader on the other side. So with that, if that resolves this, this particular issue. Brad, can you cursor where you think the fence would start again? So that we're clear on that when we make this revision?
About here?
As long as you get your 25 clearance.
Right here? Right about here?
Yeah.
Here. I would say if you're in that ballpark, so you do have enough clearance for cars to go around, the people on the handicap spot safely and stay out of your loading area, in case there's something parked there, you know what I mean?
So we would set the fence to two to three spaces back for loading on the west and from the entry on the east.
It could probably be a good idea to put some reflectors on the posts as well.
Agreed.
So you gotta remember, this is gonna be, the main street's gonna be plowed too. So you're gonna be fighting back and forth if there isn't a little barrier in between on where the snow's going. You know, they can go right over into your lot, you're gonna be pushed in a bag, you guys are gonna have a snowball fight with plows.
It's our plows, all states put plow on that thing for three years. So that's how it works on that private way. We assume that responsibility, I've been told, so that's okay.
I think those, that space in this, you know, 25 feet or thereabouts on both ends is fine. As far as the type of fence, I like Pat's idea. I hadn't thought of it, but I do like that idea. But depending what the rest of the board will go on, as long as there's some kind of a fence there, I think I can go with it.
I'm okay with the split rail fence with reflectors. I don't think we should hold it up for that.
Agree.
All right.
Yeah, I'd like the other fence, but I can understand why you want to go with the split rails since you have it on the rest of the property and you're gonna have to maintain it, you know what I mean? You're doing the plowing and everything else, you're gonna be. If that's what the board feels, you know?
Okay.
On your sidewalk in front of the parking spaces, is that four feet wide, except in your handicap ramp is five?
Yes.
Correct.
It's noted down there, the proposed four-foot wide, two-minute drive through sidewalk.
Down here, thank you.
And it's five feet up. Five feet up there, yeah, for the handicap ADA accessible. That'd be my sidewalk that I use. When I reach my hips again.
We'll have the special cards for people just like you.
That's right. I'm a special card person.
Well, your, your security guard in the parking lot, your security guard in the parking lot is going to be very busy with people coming in and out, keeping the social distancing, distancing. I don't know if you're going to mark the walkways outside so you can go in, not allowed to get out, park, wait. It's a lot of work for that trained person to do.
I think, I think actually having a split rail fence, uh, is a good idea with, with that in consideration. I think that'll help root, root and corral the, the, the patrons much better and probably make it a little easier. Those, the security guards can be freezing his butt out there, yeah, in the winter time.
He chose the job.
He did. Hopefully as well insulated like me.
And even, uh, if it turns out that, um, during peak hours, whenever those end up being, that we need to put a second person outside, we would just put a second outside. So, uh, we very much want this to work out and we're not going to, if, we're not going to skimp on an additional person if needed to help on both sides, so.
Smooth out, clean protocols. It's really, you know, we're here to do the right thing and to, to benefit our, you know, our employees, the customers, the vendors, the town of Rockland. So, you know, we just, to those things, we would be adding a second attendant or changing our staffing. Protocols change or adjust. Again, we're still, uh, paying for additional guidelines on those requirements, but we're ready to do what needs to be done.
I think we've done a wonderful job in regards to what's existing right now. Um, and listening and, and having multiple hearings with the planning board and also the zoning board and putting a lot of, into a lot of the suggestions and concerns, uh, we were able to, you know, gain this comfortably, get a better flow safely in. And it's going to look a hell of a lot better than having all these concrete ramps up the front. We have a lot of more landscaping going in. Uh, I think it's going to be a very nice, attractive facility at the end of the road. And hopefully, once we're underway, we'll be able to make, you know, that roadway will be better maintained. Uh, things will look better. Um, I, wherever we put these places, things around it generally do a little bit better as well financially.
Does anybody have anything else on the site?
Design on the, for the board.
About lighting, can you put up your plan for the, uh, your lighting in the parking lot area?
I don't have the lighting plan. I know we, we submitted a photo.
We submitted, Jill Gable, you, you have that acceptable? Here.
I'm looking for it right now. I know it was, I was trying to find the file name for it.
I know that it's all wall packs, correct?
Correct. Brad, do you have a copy of the submitted package, the combined package?
I don't have the whole package, no.
I do. Uh, this is Grover. I, I have the whole package. Technically, if I can, you're going to have to share the screen with me, but I think I can get it.
There you go.
Okay.
Grover, the file was just named two buds.
Okay. Let's see if I can, uh, get there.
Brad, I just emailed you the photometric plan too.
Oh.
Oh, uh, can you do it, Brad?
Well, I'm not at the office and I'm not connected, so I'm going to have to take.
I'm going to work, I'm going to try to work on it to some days, too, Grover.
Okay, I did get it. I'm going to have to send it to my Gmail address.
Let's see if I can, yeah, let's see if I can get it right. I just found it. So the package is here. What's it called?
Uh, it's just called Two Buds.
This was previously submitted, correct, Jill?
Yes, it was. I'm just trying to get it on my screen right now.
No, I don't have that cut, she. Okay, I have a, I have, I have it. Is it exterior lighting fixture schedule, Jill?
Uh, no, let me, let me.
Site lighting plan, permit plan set?
Sounds right.
Okay, I have that. So now you're going to have to share the screen with me and I can, uh, make this happen. Pretty proud of myself. So we did not revise the lighting plan. I'll show you what I have. Um, but the lighting plan wasn't revised after the ZBA with our new parking scenario. Okay, can you share the screen?
Grover, you can just go down below and where it says share screen in the green, that, then take control. I relinquished the screen. There you go.
Okay, can everybody see that?
Yep, yes. Well, it's, it's not the photometric plan, is it? Yeah, it is, okay. So Grover, the fixtures, the, the, the black dots along the face of the building are the wall packs, correct?
We see those, yeah. And camera security.
Yes.
There they are.
Yes.
Okay.
The W P sixties.
And they were, yeah, they were submitted. They're topaz LED traditional wall pack.
I have that PDF as well that shows the wall pack, if I need, if you want to see what the light looks like.
Zooming out.
John, do you?
They're more, um, well, they're electric controlled or are they on a time clock or?
They'll be on a time clock or on the security system, on the building management system.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm holding them up right here.
Oh, I, I got the screen shared with me. John, are you, should I take this down?
John, are you upset with the?
I'm all set with this. I was looking to see what you had there and what the overflow might be, if any, which is negligible.
And then, Mark, if you want to share it, you can show the wall pack.
Yeah, I'm just, well, I'm just putting it up on my screen here.
Okay.
That's fine.
Very common, very typical fixture.
Yeah.
I really don't want to go back.
Have a listen on the side with that light flow.
Sorry, what was that?
I was asking Pat if he was satisfied with the amount of illumination.
Uh, yes, uh, I reviewed it. I actually had a different one that showed no spillover on the properties. The one that I had was dated January twenty-first by Omni Light. But it's, it's similar to what they just pulled up. But it, it does show that there's no spillover and the, the parking lot itself is, should be adequately lit.
Yeah, and, yeah, we're going to go with that. We're going to go with the, uh, plan. That's what we're going to build to.
We might have been looking at a prior version. It had the existing parking layout. So the, the final plots will have the final civil plan with the lighting overlay.
Okay.
Is that acceptable?
As far as I'm concerned, it is, and Pat seems to be satisfied with it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm sorry if I'm repeating some of the thread, but is there employee parking area?
The rear part of the building, our, our employee entry and the, and the point of, point of entry and suit-up security entry is at the northwest corner. And so there's twenty-two spaces at that rear section. That's what we intend to use most specifically for the employees.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Just out of curiosity, like where their employees are parking, where's their entrance door? Is it in the back of the building?
Yeah, if, um, Brad, can you just show them the entry point here at the gate at the back?
Can you see my plan?
Yeah.
It's up here, okay.
What we did is we, we took, there's existing parking there. You can see in the gray, um, more shaded areas. Um, and then the overlay darker lines are ours. Based on the parking requirement, we're only obliged to provide two accessible parking spaces and loading areas, which we put at the front of the retail. Also requested to have this third one as close as possible to the employee entry, just, um, to accommodate any, uh, needs of our employees closest to their entry points.
Yeah, the striping that's there, it's, uh, just thought I would note that it's not compliant, the, the space sizes. Um, so the striping that we're proposing complies with, you know, twenty by ten, nine by eighteen, in this area. So you see, these are actually spaces.
Right, that you're eliminating.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I know you have security or anything, but there's really just cameras and your card system to get into the building. There's nothing really stopping anybody from walking around and over there.
Well, there's a needed entry and then there's the actual exterior door. And we have a security on, on our interior plan. Uh, BKA Plan A seven A shows interior layout. At that point of entry, there's a security entrance locked vestibule. Again, no, get past that locked vestibule without the security admission.
All right, that, that's what I figured. I might, there has to be something there.
Absolutely. And, and with the COVID, you know, that, that point will be, you know, even further blocked up as far as, you know, every, every person is going to have to come in and do a temperature scan and, and go through the questionnaires or other items for as long as, you know, as we need to implement those protocols.
And we do have a security guard twenty-four seven there.
Absolutely.
At that entrance? Yeah, they, they're going to be in front of the monitoring screens. You get more rise than right in front of you with the security system that we have. You sit right in front of a monitor and have about thirty, thirty cameras instantly you can watch.
There's just, uh, there's a security guard for the employee entrance in the back. And there's a security guard for the customer entrance in the front.
For the retail store.
For the retail side. Yep. So, too.
Anybody have anything else?
I just had one, uh, one further thing. Once the approval is granted, what's the timeline looking like?
So it was up to Mark Rocher. It'd be tomorrow, but it'll be right away. We, we have, they have to vacate the building. All state is still operating. They got to leave and then it will start.
We had proposed an opening for the retail store, uh, this summer. That's going to bump into the fall, uh, minimum with, um, the delays we've experienced. And the cultivation manufacturing facilities, ninety to one hundred and twenty days thereafter.
So you're probably not going to be looking to start your renovations for probably another month or two months?
Correct.
Correct. We need your approvals and then we need to finish, um, producing the construction document package for the building permit.
Permit. So, yeah, it's going to take me about six weeks to get, get done with the construction permits, set of plans to apply for the permit. So, and then till then, and, uh, there'll be a couple of weeks after that, if we, if we get the permit, then we can start construction.
Just to give you a heads up, I'm sure some of you know I work in the building department as well. Um, we're taking probably a little bit longer now to get permits out because of the situation.
Yeah.
I missed.
So just kind of keep that in your timeframe.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, we, we, I'm dealing with that with a lot of different towns, John, so, um, and two to, two to thirty, you know, two weeks to four weeks, I, I bet, huh?
Yeah, I don't want to slow you down and we certainly aren't going to try to slow you down by any means, but just the way things are, it is taking longer to get permits out.
Well, just give me the permit now, we'll be all good.
Yeah, but that's not my job.
Get your check.
Right after I pay my taxes.
That sounds good too.
Oh, it'll, it'll be, um, I want to get done with it right away, you know, as soon as possible. Uh, we can begin site work and, and start doing that while, while we go to permit, you know, we can start site work for it.
Yeah.
Upon its approval, considering from the board.
Uh, I just have to say, Rob Rosa, do you have anything to add? I know you've been listening.
Uh, nothing really. You guys have pretty much covered everything. Um, we didn't, we asked a lot of the same questions. We got a lot of the same answers. Um, no, everything, and everything seems hunky-dory as far as I can see.
Thank you, Rob.
Do you have anything else to add, Pat?
Uh, no, they took care of all my issues that I had raised back in January when they revised the plan. So I'm, I'm good from the site side of things.
Okay. All right, order. I guess, uh, how does the board feel on the site plan for, you know, what's that, fifty-three airport park?
Mike, does Adrin Galvin have anything to add?
Hey, John, uh, this is Tony Riley. Um, Bob had to jump off because he's doing another one of these with Marshfield. But just remember, uh, when you vote, you just have to do a roll call vote. Uh, so one person goes at a time. You say her name and you say how you're voting.
Okay. So what is the board feel?
I'll make a motion to accept it with the provision of the fence in the front.
I'll second. That was Jared.
John made the motion. Randy, Charlie, what do you feel?
I'm in favor.
Randy?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're going to say yes and no, or is you?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, this is Chairman Mike Corbett. I'm in favor, as long as, uh, they meet all the existing conditions that were approved by the zoning board.
I'm in favor, as long as, uh, they meet all the existing conditions that were approved by the zoning board. Incorporate those and to our records also. And I guess put up the split rail fence, so we kind of delineated, make it a little safer for everybody pulling in and out of there. Okay, so all those in favor?
Hi.
Go one, you have to go one at a time, and everyone has to say their name when you vote.
Okay, all those in favor, John?
John Locust, yes.
Jared?
Jared Valenzola, yes.
Charlie?
Charles Williams, yes.
Randy?
Randy Hobel to yes.
Michael Corbett, yes.
Thank you, board.
Did a good job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you in your town.
All right, good luck on getting your your permit and everything.
John, I'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. To get it moving.
Can I ask a question about the process and or protocols and for us to add that split rail fence for your request? Do we need to create a new C one plan and resubmit that, or can we do that with the building permit? And then they will circle it around through the ZBA and your planning board for compliance? Is that how Rockland works, or?
Uh, Tony, what would be the best way to do that?
So I think, uh, they can they can go through the building department, and at the end, uh, they'll have to submit an as-built plan, so they can just show that new fence on the on the final as-built.
Might be easier if you showed it on your plans that you're submitting to the building department.
Yeah, that too. Yeah, that too. So go through the building department to get to building permit with that on the plan, and then your final as-built will show that as well.
That should work fine.
All right, that'll be done then.
Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Stay safe.
Thank you. Good night. Stay healthy, everybody. Thank you very much for taking the time. Yeah, yes, stay healthy. See you soon.
Thank you.
Bye bye now.
Thank you.
Bye now.
Well, anybody, don't leave. Everyone's jumping around here.
Hopefully, B A is kind of jumping around, right?
What's that again?
And hopefully, that's it for all the moving parts.
All right, we do have some, uh, some other things on the agenda to do. We have a approval of the minutes of February twenty sixth. Probably the last time we were at Town Hall.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, who was that, please?
Randy, motioned.
John, second.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor? All right.
Randy, Randy, I.
You have to ask us individually, Mike. You gotta do that every time, just so you're compliant.
All right, Randy?
Well, yes, I, yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Right, I said I too. Excellent. All right, we have a invoice here for Emery Engineering for one hundred and seventy eight dollars and seventy five cents for for the plan review.
Do we have the money?
Yes.
We legitimately have the money. I've been hearing rumors.
That's why I asked.
I know, you're right.
That that money's in a different account.
Mike, I'm back. I'm back. I was listening to the discussion, so I heard the vote and stuff like that, but I just had to make sure we didn't settle a case in Marshfield that someone wanted to settle.
I'll make a motion to approve the payment to Emery Engineering. And that's Jared Valenzola. Give the motion.
John will second it. I was John.
Yes.
Randy?
I.
Charlie?
Yes, in favor.
Right, I'm in favor of paying that invoice also. All right, we have another invoice for uh, Emery Engineering for three hundred and twenty one dollars and seventy five cents for a plan reviewer, two fifty six Weema Street.
Motion to approve, Jared Valenzola.
Randy, second.
John, yes.
Charlie, yes.
Michael, yes. Michael Corbett, yes.
Jared, yes.
All right, and we have an invoice for, um, Gillian Associate for one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for the traffic review that they did for fifty three Airport Park Drive.
I'm assuming we still got money in the account for the from Airport Park Drive?
We do. I requested a check prior.
Okay. I make a motion, we pay it. John said that.
Jared?
I'll second that.
That was Charlie?
I caught that.
Jared?
Yes, Jared Valenzola.
Randy?
Yes, Randy Hobel.
All right, Michael Corbett says yes. And we have another one to, uh, pay the secretary.
Motion.
No, Mason.
Huh?
W B Mason.
Well, did I miss that one on my list?
I think so.
I don't know. Where am I here?
Chrissy, when was that? When were those items ordered? Or John, was I still working when those were ordered?
Yes.
All right, I was gonna abstain anyway, but just was curious.
Yeah, you were.
What was?
File cabinets.
Those are file cabinets.
So I paid for them, too.
Is it on there?
I'm looking. I'm like, which which one was it? What date?
Wait, that's the Gillian.
I can't find it on my on my phone here.
I have it on there.
That did, oh, hold on, let me. Oh, yes, there is one. Yes, I'm pay the invoice for W B Mason for four hundred dollars for supplies. Did you get those file cabinets finally?
Yes, we finally did. It only took two years.
Guys had a crappy.
Forget about giving me that ink cartridge, too. I don't want it.
I don't work there. I'm I'm out.
All right, what what's the what does the board feel like? Should we pay that one?
I move that we pay it.
Randy?
Randy will second.
Charlie?
Oh, I agree, in pink.
Jared?
I'm staying.
All right. I say we pay it also.
So just note that's four zero one, so I don't get in trouble.
Four zero one?
Yes, I abstain.
Four in four in favor, one abstained.
Yes, I got it.
All right, and the motion to pay the secretary.
Motion to pay the secretary, that's Randy.
Second.
Jared?
Yes, Jared, yes.
Charlie?
Absolutely.
All right, I say yes. All right, uh, what else we have here? All right. Attorney Galvin logged off. I was going to ask him about something, so we will have to text him later. Or email him.
Why don't we text him now and have him get back on?
We do have a question on three six, the P U D that might be coming before us.
Well.
With some of the variances.
Is Pat still on there?
No.
No.
No, because when the when was it?
Charlie, is that is that COVID haircut?
It's no COVID haircut.
I don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, I do.
There, we'll get back to, just a reminder, we all have another meeting next week for the schools, which should be quite entertaining.
We've also got the, uh, open meeting on the the articles for the town meeting.
That'll be fun.
Yes, for the FEMA report.
I spoke to Tom about that. He said it's just it basically a matter of being able to access grants from the state. That there's no real changes to anything that we're doing.
All right, what does that wasn't it just basically changing wordage into adapting the wordage so?
It's basically changing wording so that the town is, uh, able to get state grants for flood floodplanes.
Right, because other than that, you don't we don't won't be able to people won't be able to get insurance or something, right?
I believe that's what it is, yes. Maybe Rob Rosa, I can get in touch with him, and he can put together a little something for us that we can look at ahead of time. Because he does, he has done a lot of the surveying for the floodplain to change a floodplain.
Yeah, that would be that would be good. Explain it to everybody.
I mean, I have a very small background with it when I worked for Senator Hedman, obviously, that was a coastal district, but uh, I think what John just said is pretty close to the correct answer. Um, buy a latch has to do with people's insurance and being their ability to get it. If we're not up to date, they won't be able to get it.
Well, it would be good to be up to date.
The elementary school, was there an invite sent out for that?
Uh, I thought there was a meeting invite.
It's not on my calendar, but I'm sure it's on a different calendar than I'm too.
Oh, no.
June eleventh, no, it's June eleventh, I'm sorry.
I will be I'll be doing that this week.
Okay, so you didn't send one out yet?
No.
Oh, good.
But they sent one out the first time. I thought that would have approved the first time, but it would probably have to be reset because.
It's part of the FEMA article that was advertised. It's the same one. But I'll be doing an agenda this week for next week's meeting, which will be for the Warren Articles and then for the school. And all that.
We're doing the full-blown school next week?
Yes.
So we've got two meetings for the school?
Yes.
Yeah, FEMA and the school.
And then the eleventh of June, we get the schools again?
Yes.
We're all gonna be so smart.
Wicked smart.
I don't know about that. Yeah, they're gonna come. And they're gonna be going to zoning, and then they'll be coming back to us.
Yeah, I I'll just I will point out in open session, I said this to Chrissy last week, just the importance of trying to say as best as we can on schedule with that. Um, it's the only project that would actually cost us money if, for some reason, it were to fall off the rails. Um, so hopefully, we can keep it on track and, you know, save as much tax money as we can with it.
Jared, would you know that if how this naturally, this is affecting everything, but how this affects the finance and and whatever, the money going forward?
I I I actually asked that, um, Mike, at our last school building committee meeting, and the school building authority one hundred percent uh, has affirmed that all projects that were approved before this downturn, for lack of a better term, are fully funded and will continue to be fully funded. So, uh, the project from the state side will be completely unaffected. Uh, locally, I would imagine the same, since obviously we're borrowing the money to to build it. So uh, the only thing that that was added or is being added potentially is certainly some COVID restrictions. Uh, not restrictions, but new guidelines are granted. Hopefully, uh, by the time we're breaking ground, which would probably be over a year from now, still maybe close to a year from now. Um, just purely speculating, but, uh, hopefully, once we break ground, we'll be very much out of the woods with this, and there won't be any additional costs necessary to build the building.
Let's hope so.
Yeah.
On on both the.
But it's funded. The money the money's coming, thankfully, and, uh, like I said, MSBA affirmed that all projects that were in the pipeline or approved projects, shouldn't say pipeline, approved projects will, um, be going forward as planned.
Okay, I was I was wondering about that. I'm like, there's no money coming into the state. How does that affect everything?
Yeah, thankfully, MSBA, you know, I I mean, we're not too far to the weeds, but they're funded. Uh, every penny on the sales tax goes towards, uh, the school building authority, and then obviously, they they invest it and they they do their uh, financial management the way they do it. Uh, so the state, which is quite a change from the way the state used to do things, but in this instance, the state approves it only if it has the money. Um, now, with a downturn obviously coming, like you just said, uh, should there be a downturn in uh, sales tax revenue, that would obviously start affecting future projects, but thankfully, Rockland is still on track and everything is still going as scheduled, thankfully, and we're we're meeting on Zoom as well, so.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have anything?
I, um, I do have one more thing. If we do end up voting on the P U D for for three sixty five Concord, I will not be voting on that due to to potential conflict with, um, that situation.
Yeah, understood. You know, don't don't show up if we're having a meeting for fill out the conflict in interest forms just to cover yourself.
Yeah, I already went through ethics on the conflict of interest stuff. Um, and they were kind of vague about it, but I I think it would just be better if I don't get involved in it. But I mean, I will tell you, the board, that I do approve of the plan, but won't be be voting on it.
Understood. Do you have anything, John?
No, I don't.
I know I know no one's come in to see you at the town hall.
Oh, not recently.
Hey, John, let me ask you this. Did somebody come in and talk to you or something about next to the Dunkin' Donuts, but on a gas station?
On Hingham Street?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, right by the set of lights that goes nowhere.
Um, that's where the Iron Iron Diner was going to be.
Correct.
Okay, no, um, Mike asked me, and I forgot to mention it. Um, Mike and I have had a couple informal meetings. Excuse me, with, um, oh, an engineer there. Mike, do you remember his name? Oh.
I don't remember his name.
Garvey, I think it is. Um, where the Iron Iron Diner was going, they are now looking very seriously at putting in a pre uh, a daycare uh, facility in there. Uh, Mike and I have looked at some tentative drawings on it, uh, as far as the placement of it, and, uh, I had the fire department look at it very quickly, Deputy Heaney. He had no objections to it. Uh, the only objection was it's a high-traffic uh, function early in the morning, the same as Dunkin' Donuts, but by state law, we cannot tell a daycare where they can or cannot go. Um, it's a national concern that's putting it in. It's gonna be at least the plans we tend to be looked at with two stories. There's about a hundred and ninety or a hundred and ninety-four students in it. It looks like it's well laid out, um, and it's. It looks like it's well laid out, um, and it could be taxable to the town even though it is a school. Um, so that that went back, I guess they're doing some final planning on it. Uh, you haven't heard anything further, have you, Mike?
No, I haven't heard anything. But then again, sometimes we don't hear anything for a while from them.
Right. Uh, there's also another piece of land further down the street going toward Route Three that they're going to zoning, I believe, in the next two or three weeks. They're gonna put in a five thousand square foot building in there, fifty percent retail and fifty percent offices. Um, I believe they're buying some land behind the lot that's on Hingham Street in order to get all the parking in, uh, or at least I, that's what I believe. Um, but they don't know what type of retail and, or offices. So that, uh, that should be going forward. They're going to zoning, I, like I said, I think in two, three weeks, maybe four weeks, somewhere in there.
Is that on Lucas side?
I'm sorry?
Is that on the side of Lucas or the other side?
Side of Lucas.
Yeah.
Front of, I believe, well, I think the address is ten fifteen Hingham Street. Um, so it's beside a couple of the big office buildings that are down there.
Yeah, kind of right near the lights there for, it's Commerce Road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all I've heard, Mike.
Okay, and I, I haven't heard anything about Wendy's since, since they shut down.
Yeah, what he told me is they were not gonna start up until this virus is over with.
Yeah.
You can't even get in the Home Depot. The place is jacked up.
Yeah, and you gotta stand outside in line for an hour. Be nice.
Yeah, you gotta stand outside yet. John, if you sell out your hardware, you wouldn't be allowed to be open. Go figure.
Why not? It's an essential business, but I don't have it, so it doesn't matter.
I go over to Curry and Hanover, I had to. The line was, I couldn't even park.
The virus made a deal with Walmart. It won't get you in Walmart. Might get you in a smaller store, but the virus thankfully doesn't, uh, virus doesn't hit big box retail stores, small family-owned businesses. I'm sorry, I got Tucker on in the background now, so I'm just starting to go very right wing on all of you folks.
All right.
We did talk about, uh, Mike, you and I met just before this started with, um, the golf course, uh,
Oh, yeah.
Cricket Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't even remember.
Randy, you belong there. What's the name of it?
Arm and Club.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything from him.
No, he gave me the impression they were low-key and getting, doing it, but they're looking, putting a P U D over there as well.
Yeah, I, I don't know how this is gonna affect him.
I don't know if it will.
Yeah, I mean, if he, if he goes forward with it or not.
That's about it.
Anybody else have anything to add?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I will second it.
That is Jared. And Jared is yes.
John is yes.
Randy is yes.
I'm a yes, I second as well.
Yeah, I'm a yes.
All right, then, we're all done?
We're all done. Thank you, Chrissy.